October regular meeting of the Jessamine County Board of Education. Mr. Moore, would you please call the roll?
Yes, I want to make sure, I think we have Pastor Wade Arp with Nicholasville United Methodist Church here, I believe. Pastor Wade? Arp, is he here?
Yes.
Okay, see in the back there? Okay. There are two others that want to speak tonight.
We appreciate you very much.
My name's Wade. I won't preach, I promise. Just want to say thank you all and offer a little prayer. I think anybody in leadership right now, it's tougher than usual. I just want to say a special thank you to you all, the leaders here in our school board, our school system. Y'all are kind of heroes in a lot of ways, making things happen and keeping it going. So, thanks to all of y'all for, in Kentucky, we say all y'all. Thanks for all y'all for all you're doing. Let me just read a word of scripture and then just pray a short prayer. And the scripture is Jeremiah 29. I just read that word over us tonight. "For surely I know the plans I have for you," says the Lord, "plans to bless you and not to harm you, plans to give you a future with hope. Then when you call upon me and come and pray, I will hear you. When you search, you'll find me if you seek with your whole heart." Almighty God, I ask your blessing upon these leaders called for such a time as this, lo that you would grant them discernment and wisdom and patience, courage, strength and even joy. Lord, bless them and keep them. Make your face to shine upon them. Be gracious unto them. And, Lord, give them peace. It's in the mighty and awesome and powerful name of Jesus we ask and pray. And all God's people said, amen. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate your commentary.
Mr. Moore, do you want to go ahead and call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Chairman Stevens Krieger.
Here.
Vice Chair Denise Adams.
Here.
Amy Day.
Deborah Hood.
Here.
Bobby Welch.
Here.
We have five present, we have a forum.
Do we have anyone needing to pledge allegiance?
No, sir.
Okay, you want to go ahead?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jessamine County schools exist to motivate and challenge every child every day to be a caring, responsible citizen and a high-level thinker, performer, communicator, and owner for life. Let us remember our mission statement and as it guides our decisions tonight. Our agenda this evening, I would like to make two revisions to it. We're going to remove under communications, item number two, the health department update.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gucci could not make it tonight, he had a previous commitment. And I'd also like to remove item H, the executive session. If anyone has any...
Can I make one more recommendation? Can we move audience communication?
Yes, I was gonna, yeah.
Okay.
Those are the only two deletions I'd like to make from the agenda tonight. Does anyone have a question or comment on that? All those in favor of approving the agenda with the revisions I just stated, say aye. Aye. Or say no. All right. Quickly, we've all had a chance to look at the September 28th board meeting minutes. Do we have any revisions needed to those? All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the board meeting minutes.
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or say no. All right, I'm gonna quickly move the audience communication section up. We've got a young lady that's gonna speak to us tonight that needs to get out of here and go do something, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Abby Jo Fitch.
Well, thank you. Okay, just let me know if you can't hear me, because I'm kind of a quiet speaker, so. Okay, thank you. Is it working? Okay. All right. Thank you guys for having me here today. My name is, oh, could you switch this off? Sorry. Thank you. My name is Abby Jo Fitch. I'm a senior at West Jessamine High School. I'm the vice president of the 2021 senior class, vice president of FCA, member of Sources of Strength, National Honor Society, and a varsity athlete, which is why I'm wearing this, because I'm about to go to a soccer game. And I believe as it is my duty as in those roles to not only represent the senior class, but also represent all of our peers, including the middle schoolers, as we all want to figure out what plan is best for not only our students, teachers, but also our families. So, just thank you guys for all you've done. I know this has been a hard and trying year, and we appreciate all the effort you've put in, but we all want to be able to help, so that is why I'm here today, to hopefully give some suggestions. I did some research in other counties, I talked to Mr. Moore, and just hopefully some of these suggestions can help take some stress off of our everyday school day. Could you switch that? Okay, so some of the basic information is, as of Thursday, October 22nd, there was 385 students quarantined in our school district. Eighty-one percent of the students quarantined are middle and high school students. And then there was 41 teachers who have tested positive or have been quarantined. So, based on that data, the biggest issue has been the number of students and teachers quarantined in our school district. It's not even the number who's positive, it's more of the people who are affected around, which means the biggest issue has been staying six feet apart. So, another issue I've realized is the bus driver shortage. So, some ideas that I have come up with is make a video created by students to help recruit bus drivers and share on social media. Mr. Moore and I have talked about that, and we decided that one of the, it would be a good idea for one of the clubs at West Jessamine to make a video, maybe like a parody, and we could share it on social media, and hopefully the right person will see it. And another idea is prioritize who needs the bus, tell parents to take kids if they can. And there, on that graph, it just shows, based on the grades, how far students can walk. So, it says elementary school students can walk a mile to school, middle and high school a mile and a half, and, or, middle school can walk a mile and a half, and high school can walk two miles. And just kind of, if needed, to go to that solution. And then also, if needed, we could have central office administration, instructional assistants, et cetera, be trained to drive a bus and have them cover routes in morning or afternoon if we are desperate for bus drivers. And then another issue we have come across is the teacher substitutes. So, we could also, I've heard that we're using a job finding agency to find bus drivers, so we could also do that to find substitutes. We could have central office staff go in classrooms and cover for teachers that aren't there, because most of the teachers are able to be on Zoom and still teach their classes. We just need a person in the classroom. And that will not only help with that solution, but it'll also help boost morale, because I don't know about you, but I would love to see Mr. Moore in one of my classes, it would be fun. And then we could also possibly have parent volunteers cover classrooms. That could be the role of many PTO parents as they're figuring out how to help the students this year. In a desperate need, we could possibly leave on our high school classes with the door open and checking in on them. I'm not sure if that's allowed, but if we incentivize the class with donuts or something, I'm sure they might behave. And then another issue is keeping students six feet apart. We could use empty classrooms, computer labs, gyms, et cetera, to place students who cannot fit into classrooms due to the six feet apart rule. Those students can watch their classes on Zoom and still get help if needed. And that, who, which students are separated from the rest of the class can switch every day, so that way the same student isn't in there. And most likely, we could try to figure out so the student is only away from the class for only one class of the day. So, the goal would be that each student is in a different room for only one class. And just a suggestion is to try to incorporate a mask break. I talked to somebody from Fleming County, and they said they're doing two 15-minute mask breaks by going outside, and I think it would be a good idea, especially for middle schoolers, just to be able to take it off and kind of breathe for a second, and then be able to refocus and get back to work. And then another thing would be able to allow office aides and teacher aides to help with contact tracing, so teachers wouldn't have as much stress. And another idea would maybe be if we need to set up trailers outside, that lets students be six feet apart inside and still learn. We did that in my elementary school when we didn't have enough classrooms. Maybe it'd be an idea we could do here. Another thing is for, another issue is sports teams. And an idea that Mr. Moore and I talked about was having athletes who are currently playing school sports choose online school unless they have a valid reason not to. That way, if the athlete gets it, then no one in their classes will be affected, and we won't have to quarantine as many people. And strongly encourage varsity and junior varsity teams to practice separately. I know we've been doing that, but just kind of keep that up. And then be very straightforward about the risk and maybe kind of talk to each of the teams about what they're risking when they're closer than six feet apart. And then, I do think, however, we should have a first come online sign up for ticket for games, especially outside for like football games, because the students can sit, just like we did at the East-West game, students can sit six feet apart and bring chairs, or let a few sit in the white bleachers. And then the plans at other schools that we, I've looked at is Woodford County is in-person five days a week. They are using plexiglass in the cafeteras so students can sit closer together, because that is, I understand the six feet apart in the cafeteria, but it's hard to really socialize and have that time for socialization when you're six feet apart from someone, as some people have to sit at tables alone. So, maybe plexiglass would be a good idea to also be able to move everybody into the same location. And as of the 23rd, in Woodford County, there was one student with the virus, and only six students and teachers are quarantined. I tried to ask them more about what they were doing today, but I wasn't able to communicate with them, just because that number's pretty low. And then Mercer County is also in-person five days a week, and the online students are using Edgenuity, which is a website they're able to take classes on with no teachers. That way, the teachers won't be tied up for using, doing online and in-person. And it may be too late to start that, but it was just an idea. So, I just want to thank you guys for listening. Let's continue to work together and fight this virus. And I just want to let you know that not only the students, but the teachers and the family are all willing to help to make this year run smoothly as it can. So, thank you guys for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say to you how much, Abby, I just want to say to you how much I appreciate, I know you're ready to get out of here, I'll talk fast, but I just want to say how much I appreciate you just coming to me with some really good ideas and just genuinely wanting to understand what we're struggling with, because you have given me some good information here, and it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
And good luck tonight.
Thank you.
I'll see you playing here in a little bit.
Let's go ahead and finish up audience communications. Is that good, everyone? Let's bring up Mr. Brandon, I'm gonna send, Whites or Whites?
Whites.
Whites. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your service to us, and you and our schools. And thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak here this evening. My name is Brandon Whiteses, and I have four daughters, three of whom are currently students in the Jessamine County Public School System, two at East Jessamine High School, one freshman and one junior, and a first grader at Red Oak Elementary School. Like you, I have been active in the community by serving our youth. Since moving to Nicholasville in 2014, I have coached girls softball at City County Park, served on the board of Jessamine County Fast Pitch Softball, volunteered with my wife at Warner Elementary School, have been heavily involved at Red Oak Elementary School with their PTO and the Red Oak Men Program, and the PTO of East Jessamine Middle School. Furthermore, I was on the planning board for the Hope Over Jessamine Fall Festival in 2017 and 2018, and the Jessamine County Fall Fest in 2019 to present. To say that I am a concerned and involved parent and member of the community could be considered by some an understatement. What brings me here this evening is a situation that occurred at East Jessamine High School on Monday, October 19th, 2020. Most of you are aware of the situation that I am referring to, as you have either received a text message, email, or both from me regarding what my daughters reported to me. Mr. Moore, I did not reach out to you directly, because I was made aware by members of this board, along with other conservative parents, that they had already done so. My daughters contacted me during their school day to tell me about how every one of their teachers had been given a gay pride flag, and that they were asked to display them prominently within their classrooms. My daughters were not aware of who distributed the flags or why they were distributed. The younger of the two even described an incident that occurred in one of her classrooms, where the teacher allowed students who identify as LGBTQ+ to wave the flags in the face of other students. My wife and I have always taught our children that if you see something happening that you believe is wrong or concerning, that you should speak up and tell someone that you trust. In this case, rather than going to a teacher or administrator, they chose me, because they were afraid that by going to a teacher or administrator, they would face criticism for being homophobic or bigoted. As I stated in an email sent to East Jessamine High School Principal Chris Hobble, I am in no way against the LGBT community. I have family members, friends, and coworkers who are gay or lesbian. And while many of their values go against those that I have tried to instill my children, I have also taught them to love everyone, regardless of their creed, color, religious beliefs, or sexuality. Likewise, I have taught them that they do not have to agree with the concepts atheism, agnosticism, or LGBTQ that go against their core values and morals. And as Jesus taught us, we are to love the sinner and not the sin. I would say the same if we were discussing any beliefs contrary to those that are widely accepted in our community, or any other controversial subject that is currently plaguing our society. I believe that every topic relevant in today's society has its time, place, and manner for discussion. Yet, the manner in which this was approached was radically incorrect, divisive, and dangerous. The fact that students, parents, many of the teachers at East Jessamine High School, and you were all blindsided by these events is a testament to how dangerous it was. More concerning is this, for students like my daughters, that feel that whenever they wear anything supporting a President Trump, the Republican Party, their Christian beliefs or values, including Bible verses, that they are harassed by other students with liberal indoctrinated views, and that teachers with opposing views treat them differently. The promotion of cancel culture at East Jessamine High School must end, and it must end now. You cannot allow or promote one set of beliefs, then actively admonish or disallow another. It must either be all or none, with zero bias towards or against anything, and that does not seem to be happening at East Jessamine High School. I previously referenced an email sent to Principal Hobble. In that email, I stated that forcing any belief on any student for the sake of political correctness goes against the mission of the educators at East Jessamine High School. That mission states, "East Jessamine High School is a family of caring educators who sees promise in each student, who commits to working in partnership with the community, develops independent thinkers through quality instruction, and empowers students to actualize their passions through support and guidance. By not discussing this type of indoctrination with the community they serve prior to its implementation, the educators and administrators at East Jessamine High School have failed in their mission by disrupting the educational process of many of the students they are tasked to educate. This is especially concerning during these current times, where the educational process is already unstable due to the pandemic. Additionally, students who disagree with the LGBTQ doctrine may have their beliefs negated by their educators, who are tasked with developing independent thinkers. Furthermore, by not support, being supportive of opposing beliefs and showing bias in the classroom towards the acceptance or exclusion of said beliefs, the educators have again failed to follow their mission. As you all know, the Professional Code of Ethics of Kentucky Certified Personnel establishes the ethical standards for Kentucky Certified School Personnel, and establishes that violation of the code may be grounds for revocation or suspension of Kentucky teacher or administrator certification. There within it declares that certified personnel in the Commonwealth shall strive toward excellence, recognize the importance of the pursuit of truth, nurture democratic citizenship, and safeguard the freedom to learn and to teach. That they shall believe in the worth and dignity of each human being and the educational opportunities for all. And shall, excuse me, and shall strive to uphold the responsibilities of the education profession, including the following obligations to students, parents, and the educational profession. Towards students, it states that teachers shall provide students with the professional education services in a non-discriminatory manner, and in consonance with accepted best practice known to the educator. That they shall respect the constitutional rights of all students. That they shall take reasonable measures to protect the health, safety, and emotional well-being of students. And that they shall refrain from subjecting students to embarrassment or disparagement. In regards to parents, those guidelines state that teachers shall endeavor to understand community cultures and diverse home environments of students. That they shall distinguish between personal views and the views of the employing educational agency. And that they shall not interfere in the exercise of political citizenship and the responsibilities of others. Nowhere do these standards allow what is taking place at East Jessamine High School. And it could be argued that there are educators and/or administrators in violation of this code, and that they should be admonished or even suspended based on the board's own policies and procedures. With that, I am not here looking to have anyone at East Jessamine formally charged with a violation. What I am here for is to bring to light a culture of liberal bias and discrimination, along with an assault on long-held values and morals within our community. Last week was Unity Week in our district, and Wednesday was Unity Day. And principals asked our children to wear orange to promote kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. However, when exiting the bus at the end of the day, my oldest daughter was called a bigoted racist by another student, simply because we have a Trump flag and political signs for Republican candidates in our yard. While this comment was not actually directed at her, and was made by someone who is new to riding the bus and does not know my family, the fact that this student would say, and I quote, "Whoever lives in that house must be a bigoted racist," just goes to show how many of our children are no longer being taught how to be civil, and have been indoctrinated to believe that if you don't agree with my beliefs, then you are wrong and you are a bigot. As an educational system, we must do better and expect better. We must hold our educators and administrators to standards higher than what we currently hold them to. If we do not, our future generations will be morally bankrupt, and society as we have known it will cease to exist. Allowing bias to permeate our schools does not serve the best interests of our children. It only creates an environment where if you think or believe differently from how some other group thinks or believes, you have a stance of being, a chance of being admonished at best and canceled at worst. Now, what remains are questions. How do we do better? How do we affect change so that our children are not subjected to the type of indoctrination that leads to cancel culture? How do we teach our children to be accepting towards everyone, regardless of their ethnic background, political affiliation, religious beliefs, sexuality, or skin color? This is not as simple as inclusivity programs or Pride Month programs. It isn't adding to Black History Month assemblies, or having speakers come to our schools and talk about whatever it is they talk about. It certainly isn't allowing students to say whatever they want to whomever they want, whenever they want to say it. And it definitely is not allowing teachers to project their own personal beliefs, worldviews, or lifestyles into their classrooms. The solution is not a simple one. It certainly is not one that will be delivered here tonight. I do not have the answers. What I do have is more questions. What I can offer is time and energy to help develop a plan. I believe what needs to happen is a group of administrators, parents, teachers, and community leaders need to come together and ask these very questions, and discuss possible solutions. This is not a short process, and it will not immediately deliver a solution after one meeting. This will be a process that takes time, thought, and coordination by bringing together the best of us, so that we are not defined by the worst of us. Before I end, ponder on this for a moment. Noted Toronto Star columnist Helen Henderson once wrote, "Schools that include everyone promote harmony, along with an appreciation for the differences that mark us individually and culturally. Segregation fosters unfamiliarity, distrust, and disrespect, which are breeding grounds for harassment and bullying among kids and countries." Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time and your attention.
All right, the last one, Ms. Hanny, is it Boaz? Ms. Boaz, please.
Um, I'm saying, uh, thank you, Mr. Moore, for letting me be here and having this opportunity to speak to the board. Uh, my name is Annie Boaz, I'm an eighth grader at West Jessamine Middle School. Um, I am currently the youngest member, a part of a Kentucky statewide organization called Preacher Committee. A couple weeks ago, we sat down with Boyle County School Board and talked about different issues surrounding the school board and how they would like to fix it. Well, one of the board members named Lori Finke suggested the idea that she believes that students should be on the school board. And I completely agreed with her. So, here today, I'm standing here explaining why I believe why students should be on the school board. I believe that we should have one student from west, one student from east, come and represent Jessamine County students, and to let Jessamine County students have a voice on the school board. And basically, just being there and knowing that students' voices are being heard. I'm very involved within West Jessamine Middle School and West Jessamine as a whole. So, personally, I would take this opportunity, and if y'all surpass this idea and agree with me, that I should take the position of being the West Jessamine representative. And, um, sorry, I'm really nervous. And how I should take that position and let students know that they have a voice, and bring students' ideas to y'all, and make up plans to better further the education and the program and schools. Thank you.
Ms. Boaz?
And, uh, yeah, and parents, absolutely, actually. And I can, and I've told her, I would ask you guys if I could, I know there are districts that do have a student representative that participates in meetings like this, they can give recommendations for a vote, but not necessarily cast their vote, and then in closed session, that they wouldn't have that connection, but there are districts that do have student body represented that way, and I know that the Kentucky School Board actually just added their first set of students. So, if you guys would like me to gather more information on the nomination process and how that works within boards, I'll gladly do that for you.
I like the idea. Thank you, Ms. Boaz.
Yeah. And I think, I think there's somebody willing to volunteer if you didn't get the hint. Thank you.
Thank you both. All right, construction update.
All right, so that's not here, so it's me.
All right.
Before Margie takes off with this, I'm gonna try to get this up here. Joe and Matt are here. We've met a couple times to basically brainstorm and plan the traffic flow at West Middle and Rosenwald. We worked with Margie and her civil engineer. They came up with three different plans for us that we came back and looked at, and Matt loved his. We didn't do anything to Rosenwald, and then as we started talking to the staff at Rosenwald, Mike Sparks mentioned that we probably should do the same. So, you'll see in these schematic designs what Margie has to present to us. So, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Margie.
I'm engaged, able.
Perfect.
And, um, she has a construction report for the CTEs, and I'm not going to spend any time on those tonight unless there are questions. Does anyone have any question on the current construction? The activity at East Jessamine in the past 30 days has been limited to correction of the punch list items, and that's coming along very well. It's very close to being complete. The work at West Jessamine, those are in your photographs, and you can see, within the next 30 days, we will be compiling inspection, so much, inspection reports for that work. And I do want to make mention, on your action item agenda this evening, there are two change orders, a change order to D.W. Wilburn in the amount of $3,942.95, and a change order to the Atlas DPO in the amount of $6,150. There are several changes incorporated into change order 14. For me, the additional costs, I feel like represent in large part modifying a door over at JCTC so that we can accept... over at JCTC so that we can, um, accept oversized deliveries for the print shop. Any questions on construction? If not, I'm jumping right into our new project for Rosenwald Dunbar. You've got the analysis, you have seen this area analysis comparison between elementary schools in the past. The only thing that's been changed here is I have added a red column to show the proposed new areas for Rosenwald Dunbar. And that get, the big, the big item is that we have been deficient in the area of our cafeteria. We are correcting that and, and very close to the recommended standard of four thousand six hundred. I will allow you to take that home, I'm not gonna go over every item. Jason, is there anything that you would like for me to direct attention to? The site-based allowance for site-based decision-making, you will see that it has increased from just under six hundred to one thousand four hundred and three, and then I have, um, included on here how that has been calculated. That is one net additional classroom in the stage, um, to add up to that fourteen oh two, oh three. It has not. It is the difference in the way that I calculated it. Previously, when I had visited that school, the stage was being used to store PE equipment, and so I added it to PE. I really shouldn't have done that. And so now, and we're gonna correct, even though that number's gone down, um, it's, we're not finished. That number's gonna go back up, because we're gonna, um, use the old mechanical room to carve out dedicated PE storage space. So when it's, that just, that, um, maneuver hasn't quite happened yet, but it's in the works.
Yeah, that's the only gymnasium that I'm aware of in our district that was developed with zero storage. They have the small office, and that's it. Well needed.
Um, and so that comparison of just the existing and the proposing, it was shown on the cover sheet of the schematic drawings. This is an overall neighborhood shot, if you'll go forward, you'll, we zoom in. The primary changes, um, on the site are to add an additional driveline for the parent pickup and drop-off at both schools. Initially, that was just recommended for the middle school. We did not learn until just recently that the same problems exist at the elementary. In our first meetings with, um, school principals, they were not aware, but since that time, we've been made aware, and we observed for ourselves that in fact, a bottleneck does occur here in the afternoon. So we're proposing to add that additional lane. Other, um, changes are really limited to the new construction, improvements to asphalt and concrete paving, and we have not designed the location of the geothermal well field yet, but that will come. An overall plan of Rosenwald, you can see the, um, proposed four additional classrooms on the west end, the proposed mechanical room. The size of that mechanical room may change. We may have opportunities to locate more equipment up in the gable of the, um, of the existing school, which would allow us to reduce the size of, of that mechanical room and thereby save money. Phasing, we intend to, um, displace these classes first, so that we will renovate the, um, east-west wing and construct the four new classrooms. We will then occupy that wing, and we will move these, um, programs out of the north-south wing, renovate that, and the last summer, we will come into the heart and complete the renovation. These next are just enlarged views of the classrooms, and we can just go through these quickly. We'll pause here, um, where we have, this is like the fourth iteration that we've worked with Joe and Maggie and Mike and their team on getting this new administration suite more, um, functional. Really, we're trying to increase the size of the Family Resource Center, restore the, um, guide, guidance, uh, suite, so that we've got that dedicated waiting, um, with the psychologist and the counselor, and then getting our site-based, um, conference room back in place.
And I'll say one thing here, so one of the biggest challenges in terms of Rosenwald is the visibility to see people at the front door. So if you can see here, we're moving the receptionist desk closer to that wall, so they can actually see out, see the people that'll be coming in.
And this is the, um, east-west classroom wing with the four additional classrooms. Maggie brought up a very good point when we sat down, she was talking about natural daylight, and, um, it was just a reminder to me that for, um, to make this a more human corridor, as long as it is, we need to separate, offset this new construction to get a slot of natural light, a little bit of relief, um, coming in that corridor. Just the outlines of the existing elevations, uh, you know, these are spot holders, and they're really just showing where we've got, that's the new mechanical room, this is the new four. It's fine, just keep going. And then the last few plans, we're beginning to show the layout of, um, furniture. As we've explained to the team that we're working with at Rosenwald, our electrical design engineers will take what we do with the furnishings, and that is their cue on where to place power, data, voice, and all, all other technology services. So, um, we're on schedule and feeling good about our, our progress. Any questions?
Can you go back to the traffic flow for just one second?
Yes.
Matt, can I tell you that when I got to school board, the first thing I mentioned to him was, we gotta fix this, the traffic in these two schools, I mean, going through both of them now, with all the space that we've got available, is there no way to create a traffic system that can be utilized by both schools that allows for more car queuing? I mean, I know we've talked about adding one additional lane, but can we not go further to really make sure that this is future-proof, and we're not gonna look up in five or ten years and be back to having?
We haven't looked at it. And we, we primarily looked at bringing that drive all the way around there, and, and every time we did it, and every time we tested it with respect to, okay, now, how's this person coming here, and the drop-offs are on the wrong side, and the lanes are getting crossed, it created new problems. I would be more than happy to, um, look at those with you personally, um, if, if that's an interest, because we certainly looked at it.
Yeah, actually, I said, it's just more future-proofing, I think, than anything. You know, I think this is our opportunity, addressing these two schools, to really make sure we get a traffic solution in place that...
I will say that we looked at that before we were made aware that there is an issue at Rosenwald Dunbar. But particularly, and this is not the reason we didn't do it, but we didn't wanna do it just, just for gratification if it wasn't solving a problem. And it did not seem to be solving a problem. I think one of the real challenges is the elevation change here, we, because we really thought about, um, reversing the bus and the parent traffic at the middle school, because we have an opportunity for so much more queuing if we were to reverse and, and do parents in this way. But the elevation navigating that hill, um, and perhaps, yes.
One of the suggestions, and I really wanna say thank you for giving the schools so much input in this design, uh, we had several... You can't hear me? That's the first in my life. Um, one of the, one of the real things that I really appreciated, the amount of input that we had in these designs, and the number of different options that were brought to us, one of the reasons, uh, Mr. Scribner, that, uh, we really struggled with having something that would be overarching, is that we really want to preserve where the students are picked up and where they're dropped off, and the further away they get from our building, the less, the more dangerous it is. We have a hard time of keeping middle schoolers in one area to be picked up and dropped off, and we want that close to the front office, and we want it close to this area. And when we have a stream of cars that are really out there and, and long, they're gonna scatter, and parents are gonna tell them to scatter. And so for safety reasons, we really like this plan to kinda condense and gets, uh, cars off the street, but still in that one location, uh, so that we're able to do that. So that, that was some of the input that we had, and we had a lot of the input.
Thank you, thank you, Matt, because, um, I was not able to go right to that point.
It, it was a safety issue, and then when we really got down to it, this plan of getting the number of cars off the street was, was perfect, and met the needs that we had, uh, in the morning, at West Middle.
Yeah, there's a question for these gentlemen. Y'all've had a long day.
Please.
Sneak out, run while you have a chance.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
We don't take much of you for granted, for sure.
Same with you.
All right, is that it for construction?
I'll take any questions, but I don't really need to, um, belabor anything else.
I don't have any, anybody else?
And those aren't gonna be final, we're having to work with the staff. Readjust the rooms based off of what they want, so this is just our starting point.
Yes, we're meeting again Wednesday, and we will meet more and more and more, so yeah.
I need a question.
Sure.
I did recognize where, uh, West Middle has, or Rosenwald Dunbar perhaps, has a second grade class that's actually meeting in an intermediate hallway. Is that correct?
That's not, they are not a... Like, they, they're not required to meet in the hallway for instruction, if that's what you're asking.
No, no, I, I would assume that there was enough space for them, that's why they were using the intermediate hallway. That was my concern, that they don't have an actual space.
And you're saying Rosenwald?
I believe so.
Yeah, I, I, I can look into that, but, yeah, their, their hallways would never accommodate in- instruction. They're, they're pretty narrow, yeah, so I'm, I'm not sure what that was about.
Their second grade class.
I know they're utilizing a lot of space.
For the last reading, there was two classes in the library.
Yes.
Yes.
Now, we absolutely...
That's the uppermost place that school was allowed.
Yeah, we absolutely used the library and put up temporary walls.
But I think it was noted, this is what drew my attention to it, was that they were having to, a second grade teacher was having to utilize the intermediate hallway. A primary teacher was having to use a intermediate hallway for their classroom, instead of having an actual room. That was my concern, not because they weren't using the space that was available, but that they didn't have a actual classroom.
I'll confirm, but I'm ninety-nine percent certain, and I don't know if it's for a particular specials, I'm, I'm not sure what that is, but I'll, I'll, I'll investigate that further, because I don't wanna tell you something wrong. But it's in the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
And then lastly, I'm just gonna thank you in advance for approving a land survey proposal tonight. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Moore?
Uh, yes, sir. I, I want to, under, uh, the recognitions, just give a shout-out, uh, to Jeanette Teeter. She wasn't able to be with us, uh, this evening, but wanted you guys to get to meet her in person if you haven't, but, uh, she was, uh, recognized as one of the nine finalists for the Kentucky Teacher of the Year, which made her one of three finalists, uh, at the middle school level. Uh, just a wonderful teacher. Uh, we got to celebrate, actually Denise Adams was over there last week, uh, for, for that announcement, and, uh, while she didn't receive that recognition as the State Teacher of the Year, absolutely a wonderful teacher, uh, very inspirational, and just so glad that she's part of, uh, the Jesmen County, uh, school system. So I just wanted to recognize her. Uh, I, I promise I'll do just a really fast, uh, with COVID, uh, when I say fast, I will go fast, because, uh, we talked about it extensively in the work session. But, uh, I do wanna just again give a shout-out to, uh, our staff, uh, the quality of instruction that is occurring in the classrooms is very impressive, uh, feel confident that they eye-ready data that Michelle was discussing to you in the work session, is going to, uh, uh, ha- have, have a common message, uh, so proud of that. Our struggles are still continuing with, uh, uh, in certain areas to include, uh, the, the requirements for contact tracing that are leading to quarantines, and then our shortage of, uh, drivers and substitutes, and, uh, we've talked about this, and I understand that it is, uh, your guys' intentions as well as mine to look for every opportunity to, uh, try to minimize some of those work responsibilities that maybe aren't as important right now, uh, because every position in Jesmen County has, uh, additional expectations, and it's been a real challenge for, uh, our bus drivers, our food service workers, our pair professionals, our administrators, and our teachers, and I think we're all recognizing that and looking for as many, uh, ways to resolve that as possible. And the only other thing I had is a, just a quick update on the, uh, ASPIRE grant, and that, uh, is a, uh, grant that we have been receiving for three years now, I believe, and, uh, this is just gonna be a few moments of a, a presentation that was put together by, uh, the teachers who are the recipients of this grant, and, uh, I know you'll be eager to, to hear their message.
I'm Sophia, and this year on the Congressional at West Jesmen High School, and last year, I was in the Spurton's class at the middle school, and I like to participate in the summer Congressional Academy tour of JFK. And what I also enjoy about doing this, I really liked having the guest speakers, because I feel like it was more of a reality vision of how it was really like, but one of the guest speakers I really enjoyed was Miss Anna Wilson, because she was able to, as a teenager, she was able to attend, uh, JFK's operation.
Hi, I'm Michael. I got to go to Washington DC trip. I'm the student Congressional Academy in my freshman year at West Jesmen High School. I like that there was a small group of us, and we were able to see some of your sites. We were lucky to go see a real dimension at the National Park Gallery, and went to see Ford Theater in a place where we're looking at, I mean, my trip to A4 was very helpful.
Uh, hi, I'm Joseph, and I remember participating in the ASPIRE grant. My favorite part was participating in the Congressional Academy, and, uh, I have papers. I also wanted to say that I really enjoyed seeing the Pentagon, you know, in the National Cemetery.
Hi, I'm Kinsey. I have seen where West Jesmen, and I participated in two Congressional Acts. I enjoyed history and was excited to be able to learn about the topics that we're not always in our class. We are also able to research topics that we're interested in.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Elliot, I'm at West Jesmen High School, I'm a teacher. And last summer, I bought to go to DC because of the ASPIRE, and it was such an amazing experience. I would like to go to DC, my experience, because of financial problems, it was very amazing to be able to go and experience all the historical things that they have there at a very true price.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be able to share with you about the ASPIRE program and our involvement at West Jesmen High School. This year, we have been fortunate to be a part of the ASPIRE grant again. This would be way our work here sharing with you, so we decided to be different, and have some of the kids who've been a part of the program share with you. This year, we have, um, three teachers from West Jesmen who are participating. We have myself, Janet, and Kathy Lee, and, um, Mr. Botts.
Thank you, Janet. And just like, uh, Mr. Botts said, we were very pleased to be able to be in our... Thank you, Janet. And just like Mr. Vons said, we are very pleased to be able to be in our fourth year in this grant. And at West Middle, there are three other teachers, Angie Burton, Victoria McMillan, and Drew Conley, who are also involved in this grant. We're looking forward to another year and ways to continue to engage our students, and maybe for supporting us in our work in the grant.
Thank you, Jason. And that was all I had, but I did wanna follow-up. Amy just sent me, so I understood it. Now I know exactly what she's talking about. They moved a second grade class that is typically on the primary wing. They moved them to the intermediate hallway, which means a classroom that's connected to the intermediate hallway. So yeah, so they just, they just moved a primary classroom. When you sent me that, yeah, yeah. And that's their language when they're just kinda talking in teacher code, but as soon as you sent me that, I'm like, I know exactly. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, but they just have them in a hallway where there's bigger kids sometimes. Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Do we have any board member communication this evening? Alright, we've already done audience communication, so that brings us to consent agenda. We've got thirteen items in there. Do you have any questions or concerns? Comments for what we've reviewed so far? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Alright, action items. Mr. Moore?
Yes, the first one, Margie discussed with you, and it is a change order number six for the JCTC Print Shop. And it's my recommendation that the board approve the DPO change order number six to increase the direct purchase order sum for Atlas Enterprises in the amount of $6,150.
Any questions or comments? Alright, I'll make a motion to approve items you want. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Alright, Mr. Moore, number two.
Margie also shared some information on this one. It's a change order number fourteen for the Career and Technology Center, and it's nine smaller items. And it's my recommendation to approve the change order number fourteen to increase the construction sum, contract sum, in the amount of $3,942.95.
Questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, G2.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Alright, number three.
And this is the schematics that were shared with you in the construction presentation for Rosenwald Dunbar. And it's my recommendation that you approve the schematic design as presented.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, so G3 and G4, so looking at the road now, I think, okay, and then four to do the land survey. So when they start doing that survey, there's a hanging truck on the top of the hill. And then everything, like, from that hill down is rock, and that's solid rock. And so looking at the schematic, it looks like they're gonna build it pretty substantially onto the end, even like one lane. And I'm afraid that they'll do the survey first. I don't want this to turn into what the problem in school is, where we find out there's a giant rock underneath it, and then pricing the project of, or estimation thirty, forty grand on it. I think maybe if we forward with the survey first and see what they got there, and then, and then approve that schematic at the end of the day.
So are you comfortable with approving the schematic? Because I think the schematic is, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's more of just the space?
It's just the space.
Like, like know that we were gonna put four classrooms somewhere? And if that doesn't work, then?
Yeah, as far as the appropriations for square footage of classroom.
That's what it is. Yeah.
That's a good clarification for me.
Yeah, and that, because I questioned the same thing when they were initially talking about the road going around. I'm like, I know that's a hill.
It's solid rock.
Yeah, I don't know what's in it, but I know it's a hill. So we just need to make sure that Margie on the, on this land survey.
She's still here too.
Oh, okay, gotcha. I didn't know you were back there. Sorry. Do you wanna comment on anything there? Okay, cool.
Do we have, do we not have a land survey previous to the build of Rosenwald Dunbar initially? That we can compare?
I don't know if we've got a survey that's, I don't know if you have access to it or not, but that's what the point of this is, is to find, to find. It's, yeah, it's...
Yeah. Well, and actually, what Mr. Rosenburn says is the geotechnical investigation, which we have not received proposals for yet. That's when we will determine what's underground. And so we'll bring that before you, probably at the next meeting. The land survey is for the topographic and the underground utilities. And it's all those underground utilities up on one more road that we need to locate, and we need to locate the underground fiber optic.
Yes.
Yes.
Part of this survey is to determine where all of those lines are.
Alright, I'll show the motion to approve, G3. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Alright, I think we heard about G4 as well. I'll second that one as well. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Alright. We've removed the executive session for tonight. So Mr. Welch?
Motion to adjourn.
Wait a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no.